Good. One, how's everybody doing? Well chilled room? I'm not complaining. All right, and start this finance meeting. And will everyone good with the approval? Oh, actually, I apologize, uh, public comment. Okay, we'll keep it moving. All right, approval of minutes from the five seventeen meeting.
Yeah.
Good.
They were fine.
All right, so consideration, sorry.
Yeah, that's Karen, she has some comments? Finance, uh, finance, uh, minutes?
I'm not on the phone, so do I?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm giving you more responsibility.
She wants to be.
All right, so we've got a lot going on with the consent agenda. So we've got four point one, which is, because my eyes and my glasses are so dirty. Will be appropriated funds for the benefits accrued liability reserve. Man, it's got the mic, yes.
There this evening, right? So I guess really a number of these, the appropriating the funds, right?
There's just the one, this four point one, which is appropriating funds to be used from the employee benefit accrued liability reserve to cover any retirement payments that were made during the twenty-two, twenty-three years. So this allows us to move money from the Avalor Reserve and then expend it in the current year. And then further down, um, starting at four point four, nope, sorry, just kidding, four point six. So four point six all the way through four point ten. These allow us to take any excess funds at the end of this year as of six thirty twenty-three and put that money into the reserves.
And there are several of those.
That's right, so, um, you remember that the, um, the reserves we set, the only one that really set a limit for is the capital reserve, and that's at ten million. We're not even close to that. Um, and so the way that we'll fund these reserves is after and as we go through the audit and as we close out the year. Remember that we still have our Pesser gear funds. And so there's a lot of things that we've been spending that we're going to be coding to that grant because that grant will go away at the, uh, September of twenty-four. And so, um, that's sort of the, the work of the end of the year closed out of like, what, what did we say we were going to do? In those, um, in those grant proposals, align those funds with that. And then that creates the fund balance that we then allocate into these reserves. Whatever is remaining that we don't put in the reserves, part of it goes to what we allocated to balance our budget for next year. We have actually an allocation of fund balance, um, that, that we are using to balance our budget. And then also we have, um, of the fund balance opportunity. That's the one that the comptroller recommends that we do not carry more than four percent of our total budget. And that's the unrestricted fund balance, right? The one that actually, um, a board can utilize if necessary, if they needed more money in a given year.
Thank you, folks. Anyone have any questions? So four point four and four point five, um, authorize the resolution to authorize the board president superintendent for the health and welfare agreements with neighboring districts.
This is what we talked about, and this is just a couple other locals.
Say that again.
Yep, so sorry, so last month we did these, um, and this is again for our students, our ICSD students attending private schools in other districts. So those other districts are providing them health and welfare services. And we sign a contract, Sean will sign, um, to authorize those districts to bill us for the services. And then we also have students coming in from other districts attending private schools within ICSD boundaries. And so we provide the services, those health and welfare services, and we sign a contract that allows us to build that.
Yes, one, one is the resolution and the other one is the motion to, to approve the resolution.
Yep, so we are, we are authorizing the, um, agreements with the, the other districts so that we can receive and provide these services.
Thank you very much. Any questions? You ready? Yep. We're moving fast. All right, five point one, Chef Anne Foundation Partnership. I don't know why you turned that mic off.
And I'm sorry, everyone, I really, I try to be brief, but it's hard. My last name's Verba, right? That means many words in Latin, so I just want you to always remember that. Um, okay, we, we are just, I think all of us, I'm just going to look around the room of the entire executive team here and just saying, um, Chef Anne Cooper, we welcome you to Ithaca. Park Foundation, we thank you for your partnership. This is just perhaps for us, I mean, I can, we just felt the energy in the room before we started. For now, over a year, um, our school nutrition, amazing colleagues who will introduce themselves, and, and they will also be presenting this evening, have been working, um, in collaboration and with stewardship of the Chef Anne Foundation. Uh, Sue Cattell, thank you for bringing this opportunity to the region. I remember last summer being able to attend, I think it was called the bootcamp, where we sort of kicked these things off and we learned about all the wonderful opportunities that regionally we were going to be exploring. I'm not going to speak about it because I'm not the expert, but we do want you to know that, um, everyone in this room and sort of this row here, we're definitely going to be supporting the work of, um, full community engagement around what we serve, how we serve it, energizing and invigorating, um, all of us around the necessity of healthy food and all of the reasons why we would do that, right? Not just about the food itself, but all the good, all of the good that it's going to lead to, including attendance rates going up and mental health and lack, less bullying and all of those things. So with that being said, um, we're going to like to turn some of this meeting over to Chef Anne to give us an overview of the foundation and the program that we're going to be entering into regionally. And then Beth and team are going to talk about the operations and some of their excitement and, and action planning around that. So thanks, Chris, for this opportunity to be here this evening.
Well, thanks, everyone. Thanks for having us here. I'm honored, uh, to be here. I'm honored to be working with this team, with all of you, with the Park Foundation. It's, it's been a wonderful, wonderful experience and there's so much good that's going to come with this, so. Thank you. Oh, great, it's working. So you know, one of the things that I heard yesterday, and it really struck me because it was something that's part of your, you know, core values is that students need to be seen, heard and known. And I think one of the best ways to do that is through food. I mean, what is it that we can do for our children? I mean, we can feed them good, healthy food. And we know that when we do that, we, we just change everything. I mean, hungry children can't learn, malnourished children can't think. Their social, emotional well-being is centered upon making sure they have healthy food. So, you know, your, as a district, your belief that they need to be seen, heard and known can start in all of your cafeterias, can start in, with all of the food that you're serving them. Because you know, certainly in K five or pre, pre-K five, and possibly as far as K eight, every student goes to the cafeteria, not so much in high school, but you know, the cafeteria staff, the food service staff see every child every day in those younger grades. And so they have this opportunity to mold them and work with them and help them learn to be the best they can be. You know, and, and for me, and this goes to, you know, many of your core values. I think of this as triple bottom line, people plan at prosperity, healthy food, healthy earth, healthy kids. You know, I could tell so many stories about making a difference with food, but one that's always stayed with me, uh, and it's a breakfast story, actually, is, um, you know, doing universal breakfast in every school is, is difficult. And when I took over the Boulder Valley School District with fifty-plus schools, we started on down that path and it was hard and there's a lot of speed bumps in the way of, of making that happen. But I had one kindergarten teacher come up to me one time and said, we had this young girl who never really spoke till the afternoon, till after lunch. And we couldn't figure it out. We were working with the family. Why isn't this child talk? As soon as you started universal breakfast, she started talking in the morning. And we just think she had no nutrition. And, you know, when we think about the whole child, whole day, that that's what schools do, we take care of every child all day long. Then the food service needs to be seen as important as academics and, and everything because we can't expect children to thrive if they're not well-fed. And I know that sometimes I hear when I go out and speak, people will say, well, that's a parent's responsibility. But I want to say that, you know, when we have kids that come to us that maybe their parents don't speak English, so the kids don't speak so well. We don't throw the kid out of school and say, well, it's a parent's responsibility to make sure they can speak English. No, we teach them English, but and the same with all the other languages. And so, uh, or all the other paradigms in a school district. We teach kids because that's what we do in our country is send our children to school to teach them. And, you know, food has to be part of that. But it has to be good food, right? So USDA says that ninety-two percent of breakfast and sixty-two percent of lunches have more than the recommended amount of sugar. One of the things in the new USDA proposed guidelines is reducing sugar in schools. And I know that's a big uh, uh, a, a big thing here. I know this team is really working on that. But it's not, it's not just about food. It's not about fuel. It's about healthy food. And one of the things we'll be working on is sugar reduction. And another thing we're going to all be working on together with this team is reducing and over time eliminating all processed foods. Kids don't need junk food. They just don't need junk food. And if a parent decides they want to serve a kid junk food, that's fine, parent's choice. But they don't need it at school. It doesn't help them learn. It doesn't help them think. It doesn't help them emotionally, socially. It doesn't help them play sports. You know, processed foods have health risks. And right now we have kids that had, what used to be adult diseases are now childhood illnesses. We see kids with high blood pressure and, you know, insulin resistance and it just goes on and on and on. So it's so important to focus on these changes to scratch cook healthy food. And there's research that backs this up. This isn't just because I said it, right? I mean, we've seen real research, a lot of peer-reviewed papers that say better food is increased academic performance, increase in reading and math scores, improved cognitive function, decreased behavioral issues. This is all what will happen over time as this team continues on their path of increasing healthy food in the schools. And, you know, one of the other things I heard in some of my discussions in the last couple of days in the district is how important is, important wellness is, not only for the students, but for the staff. And when we think about scratch cooking, which is the basis of healthy food, it helps with careers because we're moving people from opening, you know, chicken nuggets or, you know, cans of, of stuff to actually cooking, so they can be proud of what we do, what they do. It helps with the planet because we can have more plant-forward meals and we can work on the environment. We've already talked about academics. How the studies show increased access help promotes healthy behaviors. You know, that's the emotional equity, or the emotional social intelligence piece. And then equity. This is such a big equity issue. If kids aren't getting enough nutrition at home, if they're not getting enough healthy food at home, then schools need to make sure it happens. It is just part of our core values. And from that, you'll change everything. It, it's, you know, I think we can save all our children and save the world if we just all feed them healthy food. And this is what that looks like. It's not crazy food. I've been a chef for my whole life. I'm not asking you to feed fancy chef food. It's just like, let's get rid of chicken nuggets with thirty-four ingredients, half of which I can't pronounce. You know, to, to just like, okay, yeah, we're going to get chicken and we're going to cook it. What a concept, right? And that's already starting here in the district. This isn't about me. Your, your team here to my left is working long and hard on this. But that's what it looks like. It's not crazy food. It's just food and that other stuff, not even food. So we've been working, I've had the honor and privilege to be working with this team for a year. We've worked on a strategic plan. They have a three-year strategic plan. We are taking baby steps. This is, this picture was taken at the strategic planning session, uh, last sometime, when was that? Okay, in last spring. Um, and they are working really hard, all of them, and, um, baby steps. You know, I'm not Tinkerbell, neither are they. You don't have a magic wand that says boom, we're going to fix everything. I heard in an earlier part of the previous meeting or at the latter part of the previous meeting, them saying things take time. Well, changing food takes time too, uh, and it also needs support. So it's been great meeting with the admin team over the last couple of days and starting to talk about the kind of support they're going to need. And, and I know they're going to get it. And the, you know, I just can't speak highly enough about the team that you have here. And so it's a road to scratch cooking. It's been a year in the making and we now through the gracious support of the Park Foundation have a full year support into the future. Uh, and that is just fabulous. And so what you see here is the team last spring cooking whole chickens, cutting them up and serving them to the kids. I mean, real food that's just roasted chicken. I mean, how great is that? And one of the things we're working on here in Ithaca is consolidating production. So instead of cooking in a number of places, we're working towards just cooking, uh, in one spot. And, um, Beth can talk about that. And when you consolidate production, you can bring the costs down. You consolidate where, you know, from a waste perspective, there's less waste. There's less equipment in one, instead of equipment all over the district where you're cooking, you're cooking in one place. You have the expertise in one place. You can guarantee health and safety, um, your food costs will go down and uh, so that's what, one of the things we're working on. I'll be back here for a week in July, working with the team on doing that. And ICSD has success, has been successful in starting this transition. And it can be sustainable. I work with districts all over the country. My foundation, the Chef Anne Foundation works in every single state. We're touching almost four million kids at this point. And we know that this kind of work is sustainable. And the work you're already doing with great salad bars and scratch made meals will only get better as we're able to work with the team and support them in the kind of changes they want to make. Um, we also have, uh, a, a website that has all kinds of tools that we're working with the team on. And, and that will help them while we're not here, although they'll have access to us whether we're here or not. And, you know, this is something I say every time I, I talk, and that is that it just should be a birthright in our country that every child every day has healthy food in school and no child is hungry. If we as a nation can't make sure that we don't have hungry kids in school, I mean, I, I can't even, don't send me down that rabbit hole because you'd be here for hours as I start talking, but how crazy-making that is. So we're going to skip me answering to ask questions right now. And Baska and, uh, and the team are going to do a little presentation and then we'll all answer questions together uh, at the end, so. I think we need the, uh, next presentation.
Thank you. Food Service twenty twenty-three, these are some actual pictures at the high school kitchen. Jamie's out there serving universal lunch during that. I'm going to start with the next slide in our, in our COVID story. March thirteenth, twenty twenty, we were called into Dr. Brown's office. I was with the executive team. It was quite a day and I go back to that day every year because it was so different. We were told that school would probably be closed for two weeks. And that we were going to serve meals at sites. We set up meal sites at six of the buildings where the, the parents were able to come through and get breakfast and lunch for the kids. Robert came flying into the kitchen that week and said, guess what? New York State wants to close down all the roads and things like that. So what are we going to do? I remember that day, just clear as can be. So we had a Google sheet in process with the names, the addresses, um, emails of parents to sign up on the Google sheet, breakfast and lunch, how many they needed in their household. Some families didn't want breakfast, they only wanted lunch. Um, and allergies, because allergies are so important. So this team, we got together on Saturday and these two pulled it off and started packaging meals right at, right at Boynton. Seven hundred families, fourteen buses, several transportation helpers and any food service helper that was willing to work. We went out to those buildings, I mean, out to those, those homes. And, um, I was lucky enough to get on a route and I say lucky because it was wonderful. It was a great experience. We got to know the families. The kids would wave from the windows. We got appreciation letters. And not only the families would wave and the kids would wave, but we would have greetings from the pets, especially dogs. And, um, so I went out and bought biscuits because, uh, some of the pets were not as friendly as others. And, and that really made us feel good. It was a great experience. We got to connect with only the families and the kids and see where they lived. And it was, it was a great experience. So twenty twenty was not at a loss for us. So we're back to the current day. Most of the things are back to normal. We started the year with our salad bars being prepackaged and still, you know, not, not using tongs. And as we work through the school year, we're back to normal. Um, with our foods. Universal lunch at the high school, if Jamie wants to talk a little bit about that, how she, she has managed that. Do you want to talk a little?
Um, universal lunch just meant that there was going to be lunch period. One lunch period in the entire school was going to come to a halt and we were going to feed the entire school. Labor presented some challenges in the beginning and training. We ordered new equipment just to cook because I was anticipating feeding five hundred to five hundred and seventy-five in about twelve minutes and everything needed to be ready. It was all hands on deck. We do it most days. I think some of the more popular items that slow us down is the salad bar. When you do hamburgers and they want to do all the toppings or the taco and the nachos. So with that, we've learned that, oh, we have to maybe do two salad bars and push them along. We've opened up three cashiers. We did a pizza line out into the cafeteria. We opened up a third line. I've been working with Samantha Little about taking over concessions where the boosters work down by the gyms to start serving out of there. Labor was not able to bring us down there, but possibly we might have to look at that for the next school year.
Also, this November, we implemented a new point-of-sale system. It's called Mosaic. The Mosaic, the parents can go on My School Bucks, see your balances and see what, what's different from our last payment system is you can see what your kids actually purchased on My School Bucks. Also was different from our last system is there's an online free and reduced application. So at any time, uh, family can go online and put the free and reduced application. It comes right to us the next day, which is rarely helpful other than getting a pay-per-application. Going forward with Mosaic, um, we're going to do back of the house inventory and, um, nutrition processes. What, because of COVID, we had a higher reimbursement rate and we did make some equipment purchases, some at the high school, some at Boynton. Some of the smaller schools got refrigerators, freezers that will increase, uh, produce that we can get more produce in for our salad bars. And this summer, we're looking forward to a capital project at Boynton. But this fear, future, this, uh, this year, we're looking forward to scratch cooking over time. And Jen Doolittle will have a new title and directions as operations and oversee kitchens of sanitation and she'll go out and visit them. You know, we have fourteen buildings. It can all be done in two days, crazy running from one to the other. But we're giving her two weeks to all the buildings every two weeks. And, um, Jamie will be executive chef, which we will bring her over to Boynton and make sure that all the cooking goes out of Boynton, uh, food quality and sanitation wise. So we're pretty excited about that. Um, as you know, food service is a USDA-funded project, so all the funds in food service come and stay in food service and nutrition program. So as you can see on this slide, we're USDA. And community eligibility provision, this is what I'm pretty excited about coming. Right now, this year, we have BJM and Enfield is all free meals. Community eligibility is a higher increased poverty at the buildings that we can apply for this. And the state, I don't, I want to get into the little technical things, but the state has allowed us to apply and group together six buildings for this coming September. So I have applied and I'm waiting to hear back for Keuga Heights, Bel Sherman Annex, Fall Creek, LACS, that BJM and Enfield would be grouped together, so they would all be free. Of our enrollment of approximately five thousand kids that would make approximately fifteen hundred kids free, starting in September. There's a federal ruling. And New York State is, um, thinking that the federal ruling will be, come available mid-year. That federal ruling will make all the rest of the buildings free. That's at the twenty-five percent poverty rate. So we're really looking forward to that. I'll be waiting to hear from the state, the applications in, all they have to do is prove it. Chef Anne says, yes, we'll prove it. And so that'll be the big change coming this year, that our ADP for our meals should go back up. They were lower this year from coming off of all free. Should go back up at least in those six buildings in September and hopefully mid-year, if not sooner, for the rest of the buildings. I think that's the best news we can give you right now. Strategic planning sustainability in the future. So our strategic plan is a three-year plan. It has been worked through the school year with Jen, Jamie, myself, Chef Anne Foundation. It's a three-year plan. It highlights bulk milk for better flavor and quality and reducing solid waste in the schools. It highlights recyclables and reusables, um, piloting, uh, and using, Boynton uses silverware and trays and many other buildings will be doing that. We're looking forward to the future and changing our menus to a cycle menu, which includes equity inclusive of different things. Jamie, you'll get into that and menu ideas. Local procurement, right now we use Ithaca Bakery, Ithaca Soy, Wagners of Apples. We use upstate milk, upstate farms, cheese, upstate farms, egg, well, we use Syracuse Eggs and upstate farm yogurt. So we're looking into using more procuring, procuring more local foods. And of course we have the realignment of our staff. So this is our scratch cooked meal program and they're going to explain a little bit about what we have on this slide and what's the future.
Thanks. Uh, just to list some of the things we started doing. Down on the bottom, this is like a strawberry spinach salad and we make a raspberry vinaigrette to go over it. Uh, we try to make sure we always encompass like a gluten-free, a vegan option for anyone interested. Uh, we're starting to put fruit on cereals to help the kids like chop things up. We're doing all sorts of quesadillas. You wouldn't think they'd be popular, but at the high school, it's almost our number one seller. Up on top, we're starting to do like, uh, playing with different cultural foods and curries and, um, this is a couscous salad. this is a couscous salad curry based. We started teaching chopping knife skills and the cutting of all these different vegetables and roasting them off and serving them cold on salad bars. And this is a picture, not the high school salad bar. I'm not sure where, but you know, uh, two different salads and all sorts of toppings to go down the line. This is a lunch tray made at Boynton and they actually bake off all of those tortilla shells to build those taco salads. Like time consuming, but very rewarding from the kids when they enjoy it.
Could you speak to just the change in the process because you're going from production, cutting, from opening a box and putting it out there? And I know that's huge difference in operational things and getting the staff on board, breaking down the process alignment. What was that like?
So I could speak for the high school mainly because that's where a little more freedoms are had. The students are older. They can have a few more calories and such. So Beth secured like some local chickens. I talked to the staff about how to cook them, how to roast them, how to profile them, flavor, cutting them, tempering them. We tried to do a chicken line every day with a different profile. I know it was on a previous one. That was a panzanella salad with an Italian chicken, macaroni and cheese. Like, so we tried, tried to pair up a cultural complete meal there. It's a lot of training and it's hard because they don't get the rewards from it because lunch is so quick that, oh, I didn't see you cut it or I was too busy serving over here, but trying to move everyone around to cross train them.
So, so you cross train by person, not as a team? And so it's a slower skill set building?
I try to do it in pairs, like a cashier and a server together. So yes, in a team. I can't do it as a larger team because of the lunch process currently.
Can I jump in and just say that we've talked a lot about with the strategic plan? Uh, we've been talking about as they move into the Boynton kitchen and us all food is going to be produced out of that kitchen. We, we are going to support this team with more training. We're going to have a training program. We're going to be working with the, um, working through the processes with the, all this new equipment that's coming in. And so they'll, I, I wouldn't say this is done. I think this is all a work in progress. And as we said, it's baby steps over three years. But yes, there's, there's a lot of little speed bumps to get from the beginnings where we are now, as far as I've gotten, which is fabulous place to fully scratch cooked everywhere with everyone trained. So but that's part of our planning process this summer.
No, I'm upset that Mosaic came out after my kids left because I could have found out that my son was eating strictly ice cream every day. But it happens.
Questions? Anyone else on the team before I ask mine? All right. So my question is about procurement. And you talk about, uh, talk about a long horizon here. Sue, you might've been in the room. I think this was about a decade ago when a gentleman from Bali came here, building Alliance for Local Living Economies. And he schooled our entire community on how much we would benefit financially if we just shifted our procurement to local. And I'll never forget the one thing that stood out to me was poultry. Right? And what he said is if we could convince one anchor, either us or IC or Cornell to buy our chickens locally, we would increase our investment in our own community by about twenty-one million dollars. And we had someone else in the room who was from a chicken farm. And what that person said at the time was, sure, we can do that, but then we have to deal with the uh, production issues that that many chickens would cause locally, right? Water stream issues, environmental quality. I, I, and I know I, I'm, I'm very familiar with one of the core principles of the Park Foundation. So this is a, a, a question. We're moving slowly, right? We're going to move slowly into this new horizon. But these questions are on the table, right? Procurement means many things. And how will we manage that? As we move forward and increase this kind of scale locally?
So actually Cornell Cooperative Extension, Lizzie Cooper is working with us at, um, the Farm to School. So if we say we want chicken, she's like, here's a, here's some farmers that I know call them and if they can handle it, we, we can get it. So that's what we did with eggs when eggs went sky high. When was that? April. We were like, oh no. And Lizzie had given me a list and the Syracuse farmer actually comes out here. What, what is it? Once a week? But he comes out once a week. For, uh, we do sixty dozen or more and he, the actual farmer will come out and deliver the eggs. The same with the apples. So it's, it's a slow process. We have to work with Cornell Cooperative Extensions, building their process with us and seeing what we can get more local.
Great. Great to know they're involved. Yeah. They have how, how many decades of trying to manage this for entities? This is fantastic.
And, and looking towards the future, one of the things the team's going to be working on this summer is a six-week cycle menu. And we talked about that somewhat today. And what a cycle menu will do for you is be able, and it will take till the following school year to really be able to do this, but you'll know exactly how many chickens you're going to need for the school year. Cause you'll have your menu. You'll know how often chickens on the menu. You know your average daily participation for the menu item. And then you can go to the farmers and say, this is how much chicken we're going to need for the year. And that's the process we're helping them put in place. So for the twenty-five school year, by, by the time we get to the twenty-four school year and start looking at ordering for the twenty-five school year, they'll really have a lot of information to be able to start working with local producers and local farmers to increase their local procurement and do it sustainably. Like you said, you don't want so many chickens that, you know, then you pollute the water. So you need to, it's baby steps.
And strawberries. Everybody's going to have a hoop house on their lawn. So we can all grow strawberries.
Eric, you had some questions?
Yeah. The first one would be an understanding of the funding. So where, we get the food from the USDA? I mean, don't, don't we get food from the government and how do we?
Okay. So only a little tiny bit. So the way the funding works is there's three main sources of funding for the food service department. There's a USDA reimbursement for, for all categories, free, reduced and paid kids. Even a kid who pays, there's also a small reimbursement for that. With the schools, that first fifteen hundred, now the state is going to pick up the difference. And then eventually when you go to all schools, the state will pick up the difference. So every kid will, will eat for free. So right now you've got the federal reimbursement, you have a small state reimbursement, you have the paid kids who pay. And then a small amount last year, it was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand that they give you in what's considered commodity or USDA foods. So it's a very small amount, not, not much when you consider that procurement for the district's over a million. So.
Can I piggyback on that? Would you speak to the misconception about packaged processed food being cheaper than fresh?
Well, you know, there's cost and there's price. So if you go, if you go into a grocery store, you can buy a bag of potato chips. You can buy a bag of potato chips much cheaper than you can buy a couple potatoes, but the calorie count on the potato chips are cheaper. So when people are hungry, they often get highly processed foods because they're thinking of calories, you know, hungry people, the first thing they want to do is be able to fill their bellies and their kids' bellies. But so the price might be cheap, but the cost to health, the environment, the long-term, you know, denigration of our children's future is, is much higher. So processed food, oh, so there's that. And then there's the, as you probably know, if you go to a grocery store again and you look at the cost per pound of a chicken strip, it's much higher than the cost per pound of a raw chicken. Now that may not be true if it's organic and local and free range, but in general, the cost of processed food is actually higher on a per pound basis than the cost of raw food. And in this case, and we're going to be working on P and Ls and budgets with the team, you have to balance the food cost and the payroll cost to make sure the department is balanced in those two areas because they're symbiotic. You can lower the payroll cost by having all processed foods. And, or you can raise the food cost by having fresh foods, uh, or about, we're lower the, lower the food cost by having some fresh foods, but you're going to raise the payroll cost because now you're going to need more production.
But, but also when the skill set of the people producing the food increases, that's going to lower the food costs as well.
That, that's right. You'll have less waste. And we've been talking a lot the last couple of days about how to reduce waste in the schools and things like that.
Um, so you know, when you read studies about this, you read about the kids' choices and if the choice of something, nah, processed is there, they're going to take it as opposed to. So when we look at this evolving, are there going to be processed choices or is it just the scratch cooking?
Over time, taking baby steps, not, and I want to be really clear. As hard as this team is going to work, they're not going to have a fully scratch cooked meals, fully scratch cooked six-week cycle for August, nor could, could they ever be expected to. So and, and some of the food, some of the USDA foods are already ordered for next year. We got to deal with those. And we talked about that today. They have to go on the menu cycle. We can't throw them away. We need to serve them. But the goal is that it will be that we will replace, they will replace, this great team will replace all the processed food with scratch cooked food. And that doesn't mean that they're going to make everything. I can tell you from some of the districts I've been in, like, you know, we buy tortillas or we buy tamales or, you know, we, you know, so not every single thing, but the things that we do bring in are going to be prepackaged and highly processed. They will be to the same quality, but there may be things that are better to buy from local, local companies and local vendors and even maybe small local vendors and small local farmers that, that it makes sense to try and do in-house.
Right? Maybe I, I did. One thing I can say too is you will still probably see something like tacos, but it's going to be different ingredients in the taco. So it may not look as different to the kids and over time it'll be. The other thing is we've worked with other districts in Tompkins County and one of the stories I can tell, I won't identify the district is we did this whole training about salad bars. We talked to them into a salad bar. It was very early in the project and the entire staff was convinced the kids would not eat salad bars, right? Salad. And within about three weeks, they were coming to us. We had to buy a cooler to go right behind the salad bar so they could quickly restock. And the same happened. They serve a breakfast smoothie. That's a complete meal. And first we bought a commercial blender, then they came back, they want a bigger blender. Now they make it in a bucket with a stick blender. Because the kids eat good food. I think it's a real myth that the kids won't eat good food. I think there's, there's lots of research on how to introduce it. There's lots of ways it's tied into curriculum. But kids eat real food and I think it's really important. And the cost question, there's the cost of food, but then there's also the cost of poor attendance, disciplinary problems, one more person to deal with behavior issues. Like the school is paying for not feeding kids right now. It's just you're paying in staff, you're paying in friction, you're paying in burnout of your teaching staff because the kids can't learn. We partnered with Enfield to reduce a very serious attendance, chronic attendance problem. And it worked. Breakfast in the classroom changed the, the statistics which we can provide. So I think when we think about the cost of not providing meals, all those mental health concerns that we have and all the emotional, social stuff, a lot of that, and we have the research can be addressed without hiring one more disciplinarian. It can be addressed by actually feeding the kids. So we stopped treating the symptoms and we treat some of the causes. And at least it takes it off the table. There was a study we did to start the school food program. We, we hired somebody that went into all the schools, probably six years old now. And in one of the Ithaca schools, our researcher was only in the building that day, watched a child being talked to by the school staff because they kept pocketing the, the milk carton. And they're like, you can't take it out of class. And finally it turned out the kid was bringing it home for a sibling. Um, and there's story after story, like there is hunger in schools. And there is, there's lack of nutritional security in schools, which are two different things, but so related. And I know the school staff see it because we talk about it all the time. Uh, in a different district, when we did a summer meal program, I was standing there and there was a little four-year-old who could eat. And, uh, this food service director leaned over and said, do you like summer meals, honey? And the kid said, yeah, reaching for watermelon. She said, what do you like about it? And this four-year-old right like that says, it's not another hungry summer. And so I think that this work is so critically important. And when done very well, it becomes invisible like a lot of things. But it doesn't mean it's not important for the absolute function of every other department in your school.
If you think about if this were focused on athletics, we may get happen like that. But since it's a mental shift towards learning, we have to kind of grow it. So, sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. And I mean, it was kind of, it was sort of already addressed a little bit, but I, I do have that question. I think the meals look fantastic. I mean, I would eat there. Did, but do, do the kids eat? Do they choose these meals that are more healthy and look like meals that I would want to eat? You know, um, and then how does that get, I guess, how does that get looked at? And I know we sort of all started saying it like the kids do do that, but who, who's looking at that and how do we know and?
So I, I can tell you from working with many, many, many school districts and running my own school districts for food service, the kids do eat it. And the way you are able to see what they eat is through the new software that this team is putting in place. So Mosaic was bought for a lot of reasons, but one of the things it'll do is actually track all of the items sold by school by day. And that may or may not be set up by the fall, but we will work with the team and bring in some help to get that system operationalized as soon as possible. But so you have the software and then you start tracking and then, you know, and then there's education and there's doing tastings with the kids. There's, you know, marketing, there's social media. I mean, it takes a while, but I will tell you in the school district I came from, it, we were all scratched and the kids ate the food and.
Sounds great.
This is, this is a, wow. Beth, this is such a far cry from when we changed the policy that, um, precluded our cafeteria staff being able to call a child out in line because they didn't have enough on their card. Do you remember that? And I do remember you presenting us, you inviting us as board members to go to different schools when you were introducing your new small hand-based meals. So this is a fantastic. My question is, will we be able to continue scratch as we provide our meals to kids during the summer like we have been doing?
We worked on this summer menu using a lot of the scratch menu recipes and even at breakfast, doing the hot, um, some of the hot things at breakfast and some of the, at GAC and South Side. So yes, we're servicing GX South Side and Field Community Center, Cass and Stewart Park, BJM and Fall Creek this summer. So there's well over two thousand that we are servicing this summer.
Yes, this is a very critical question to me. What happens to no bake chocolate peanut butter cookies? You know, the ones, I mean, Jamie knows.
Jamie, you have to make them.
Oh, no. Long gone, long gone or just recently?
Oh, gosh. Wow.
How about, to that point, how about the juice cups, man? The juice cups were like, those are the best. Those are little treats during the day. You get the half frozen. It was fantastic.
I see you having a sugar spike right now.
I was definitely glad when the blue juice went out. So Beth, you had mentioned, how many schools? We have two schools that are free and reduced that have, um, provide, we provide lunch and breakfast to now. Next, by next year, you said six or eight?
For next September, I have grouped together and sent to the state, um, Keuga Heights, Bel Sherman with the annex, Fall Creek, LACS. And when we group BJM and Enfield in that whole group, it gives them to the percentage. So all those can be free. So Keuga Heights, Bel Sherman, Bel Sherman Annex, Fall Creek, LACS, BJM and Enfield. So Kiuga Heights, Bell Sherman, Bell Sherman Annex, Fall Creek, LACS, BJM, and Enfield.
So not all of the elementary schools?
No. Mid-year, it's, the federal rules should come down. Hopefully, Cheffan says she thinks it's gonna be earlier. So we're hoping that it's gonna be earlier, and then all schools will be free.
And what did you say, ma'am? No shaming?
No, oh, yes, and we're, we're going to continue the no-shaming policy, which has been wonderful.
And and our staff receptive across the board, and will you be able to, you'd, um, I think Cheffan had mentioned that as um positions are needed, do you think you'll be able to secure staff? Cuz I believe another school district within New York State was trying to do this. And they said, one of the challenges is that the staff is not always receptive, not necessarily the staff who are present with us tonight, but.
We do have a few open positions, but we work through it. I I will tell you from having done this, that that's absolutely a challenge. Kids are easy, adults can be challenging. And when you move to a scratch cook system, uh, some people feel like it's more work as opposed to different work. So do you have a box cutter and a can crusher, cuz everything comes in a box or a can? Or do you learn to use, with, learn to cut with a knife and a cutting board? Um, but it means education. And one of the reasons that Beth now has Jamie as executive chef and Jen as operations manager, is they'll be able to go out to the schools and train the staff and work with the staff on an ongoing basis that they haven't had time to do in the past. And also, they're planning two days of uh two days of workshops in the fall, uh professional development days to get this started. Uh, the Cheffan Foundation, through the largesse of the Park Foundation, will have somebody on-site in the county, not just for Ithaca. But Ithaca is one of the six schools we're working with, will be on-site one week a month. So there'll be continued on-the-ground support here as well. And it takes time to change people and, and you know, it takes time to hire people. But what we've seen in other districts is that as people start feeling really good about what they do, you'll find more people who wanna do it. And uh, over time, that will happen here too. Baby steps.
What's our starting rate for food service?
I always get these ones. Uh, it's fifteen dollars and eighty cents.
Fifteen?
Is, is that, is that considered living wage at the moment? Does anyone know?
It, it is, but depends on what's, where, if you live in Ithaca, or what standard of living you're used to. Cuz Ithaca's a very um difficult city to live in, making fifteen dollars and eighty cents.
We've, we've had those conversations for years and our, like I say, our position, but the benefits we provide would have taken it way over the top. But our local uh credit union who manages that, they weren't really Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, from remembering correctly, last time we had that conversation, benefits were not going to be included.
Correct.
The basis for living wage. So, yeah, just another conversation to continue. And I'm thinking of policy implications. I don't think anyone here is on the policy committee, but you talk about Chef Anne about uh again, local procurement. I'm on the board of a local cooperative retail grocery, as we talked about. We have a gentleman sitting here who happens to know something about, you know, uh food procurement. So we might have to investigate whether or not we have to shift our policies again to make it possible for smaller, local-based food providers to get in the game.
So it's actually not a policy conversation. It is a New York State conversation because X amount of dollars procured will reach over a cap, and then you have to go to a lower bid option. And Amanda could speak to that more. So if you hit a ceiling per school building, um, that
Is it per school building?
Per district.
Per district.
But then it would, it would go to a bid process.
But under, under the USDA guidelines, you actually can get around some of that?
Really?
Yeah. No, well, only for food.
For school lunch.
Yes, for, under the USDA guidelines for food, doesn't mean.
And uh, so the other thing that we probably should talk about as far as staffing, and Erin and I were um sidebarring. You know, Cornell usually cannibalizes a lot of the viable employees in the area. While we have the better benefits package by far, pay is pay. And we need to be honest and look at that. So that needs to be part of the conversation, you know, to recruit and retain quality people, you know. Cuz this is a program people wanna be part of, you know, it's it's a labor of love, it's a job of feeding children. Who's gonna be mad at that? Um, but I think it's definitely part of the conversation.
Yeah, the skills, I was thinking that, the skills might bleed into other opportunities. We've seen that with the CDL and bus drivers. So we gotta be thinking about that. How do we keep these these well-trained professional scratch cook providers here with us? And not have them siphoned off by the local com- competition.
I have two questions, and then I'm done. Um, one would be, so if you're doing hot breakfast now and scratch cooking, are the hours shifted? Is it, what, what time do you start?
So I will just say that we had a just breakfast discussion today, and not all breakfast is gonna be hot breakfast. Okay, so I just wanna set that expectation that um the quality will be as high as the team can make it. But it can't all be hot in a year one. Okay, and I think that's the we've had a long talk about that today. And once the menus are done, their priority is to work on the lunch menu, and then they'll start on breakfast. And they'll kind of figure out what production looks like for lunch, and then we'll see what production's gonna look like for breakfast. But um, we will have a higher quality, lower sugar breakfast, but it just can't all be hot. So um, I I wanna protect the team on that, cuz I know that they feel pressured to be all hot breakfast. But um, they just can't do everything all at once. And only about ten percent, eleven percent of the students are eating breakfast and fifty percent are eating lunch. So we'll start with lunch and move to breakfast.
Well, that's the perfect segue because, and I kind of misspoke. I didn't expect hot breakfast every day. I meant scratch, but um. A segue would be um the phases. So we're rolling this out. So that means, can you kind of explain, cuz we're talking about the schools being the sixth, but that's just cost. We're rolling this out to every school at the same time.
Yes.
So can you kind of just say, like, if it's a three-year process, how is it starting and and how will it evolve?
Well, I will tell you what we talked about today, and I I know I'm kind of talking about this. But we, it's kind of newer to them than it is to me, and I'm helping them get there. So right now, uh, the process in the next couple of weeks is to, the first thing they have to do is get a menu done. And then any items on the menu that don't have recipes, they have to be done. And then if they're brand new and never been done in the district, they need to get taste-tested with kids in summer school. The next step after that is to get the ingredients from the recipes put into Mosaic, the software, so that the recipes can go in. And that will help be able to have all the inventory up to date. So there's this, it's, it's this like back-of-the-house kind of stuff that's not sexy and fun. But you gotta have that to be able to control your cost, to make sure the whole program is sustainable. So that's how it will start. Um, but all of the food's gonna, you know, be under Jamie and her team. And they're gonna be making it from scratch. As I said, it won't be all scratch for the fall, but they'll work towards that. But all the schools will get the same high-quality food. Some schools aren't gonna, doesn't matter whether they're all free or not, everyone will have the same quality. And there'll be a marketing campaign that has to happen with that as well, once we get going.
Throw out that um, one of the things that we were doing through the spring, uh hmm, almost all the schools in Humpkins County joined us at a conference about scratch cook school food in Austin. Uh, Ithaca was there. Um, we learned a lot from them, and they learned a lot about what it's like to work in a small district compared to a lot of the ones there. It was fabulous. But we were also kind of floating a balloon of, is the entire district in on this plan? Or is it just excited kitchen staff? Uh, as a foundation, we're spending a bunch of money in. And so that was part of it, is like, are, does this district want it, or is it just people that are sitting in the kitchen every day? And what we got from the last trip and this trip is that Ithaca's all in, like, it's very clear. So one of the commitments we've made with Cheffan Foundation is there's a most of a week training in July. There's ongoing technical assistance for Ithaca through the summer, only Ithaca. There's a three or four-day, three-day boot camp in August for all the food service directors in the county, so they'll come and get more training. At the conclusion of that, we'd like to sign, or at least have an agreement with every district about, here's the priorities that we're working on this year, so that everybody knows and doesn't expect an instant turn on a dime, because it's just not doable. And a team is knocking themselves out, who's getting all this fixed, and somebody's criticizing about this, this, and this, it's on our list for next week. It really deflates everybody. So we thought we should just be really clear and make sure that administration and the kitchen help, and then the whole year plan, a week a year, we're gonna have Cheffan staff in town doing hard work. They're gonna be in contact in between, so we should meet those goals, and then we'll do it again next summer. And so we'll have a gradual plan that people are clear on. Um, but I would really wanna caution you on expecting, you know, kids opening the packed lunch in the first day of summer camp. It might look a lot the same. I mean, this is a huge transition. We're transitioning from shipping food hot to to cooking it before and shipping it cold for food quality reasons. But that's, I mean, the, I was, I was the note-taker today, this whole notebook spoiled this morning of what does that mean? Oh, we need this equipment. What about this training? What about food handling? What about food safety? How do we reissue that? How do we make sure the drivers have the food safety, cuz they're gonna bring the food cold now to the schools to make sure it stays at the right time? It's incredibly complex. So happy to have anybody, like, we could have a little open house kind of conversation in August if we wanna build it in. Uh, when they're in town, we could stop in, like, however, to keep you all up to date, so that we all have the same expectations. Because um, that's my fear is, like, Cheffan is the national thought leader on this. She is on every panel, every state commission, every whatever that talks about childhood hunger and school food. She's our prime, she, they are a partner. This is a known pathway, like, they've done it a lot. And so we just wanna tailor it to Ithaca, but we gotta stay on the same team, cuz this is gonna be a lot of a lot of changes. Anybody who's managed a lot of change understands completely.
Um, I'm laughing. Chef Anne, welcome to Ithaca, New York. Amanda, communications expert. Um, similarly to what you had, what you were rolling out for on building construction projects, you might wanna have somebody from the commu- communication team popping on these conversations.
Any other questions, comments?
I just wanna say thank you. This is fantastic and exciting and wow.
And I, I just wanna echo thank you, especially to Park Foundation, because I know um what they've done in the past and always on, I know Sue and I have talked years ago about how do we continue to make sure students are strong academically? Why not let's start from how they are thin? And from the resiliency and always just seeing it through. So thank you very much to the Park Foundation.
Please, Ray. Anything else, any of you wanna share before we close out?
Thank you.
I mean, you know, I'm gonna say it again, Beth, you're sitting there all quiet in in Jamira. You, you have bought us, I remember when we replaced our previous director. And uh, he told us none of this could be done, and you came and quickly showed us that it all can be done. And this is yet another evolutionary step. So thank you all very much. This is a service to our babies that um will will rebound in benefits for years, and that is appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we quit now? We have something else, nice guy?
Um, no, because it's other finance discussion items and action items. So, and we are not setting an agenda.
Glad to meet you, Rachel.
Thank you. So this meeting is now adjourned.
Well, did we at least say thank you, Chris Malcolm, for
I was trying to.
In this finance committee, I wasn't an official committee member. We always were the fly on the wall. But um, thank you definitely for the years of service that you've given to the board and for taking on the leadership role of the finance committee. I I know I definitely have learned a lot from you, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was trying to avoid that, but I, you know, humbly say that these folks sitting right over there, I mean, Amanda is incredible and her team and what they bring to the table. And, you know, I recommend anybody just set up time to sit with her and plan on sitting with her a lot. Because there, it's literally like trying to drink from a fire hose. And of course, New York State and Albany doesn't make anything easy. Um, and it's just, yeah. But you know, we, we have a very good district. We're in honestly very good shape from a business standpoint. We, we do do things differently to our benefit. And um, one of the best things I learned, Amanda was like, I'll find a way to say, yes, you ask, you tell me what you, what we need to do. And when that light bulb went off, that's when things really started to change. So thanks to all of you. All right. Thank you, Kim.